All right, case before you tonight is Denver's Pizza site plan. Okay, so the applicant Fritz Fens is seeking site plan approval for a planned restaurant called Denver's Pizza. It's at 110 East Broadway. It's also at 406 South Oak Street and a portion of 410 South Oak Street. By the way, the portion of 410 was the part that you authorized the positive recommendation on the reason council approved that. So that is officially commercial land now. The restaurant will be in the former Denver's Auto Repair Shop. It's a 2,200 square foot building that was built in 1956. And of note, the proposed project was actually featured in Indiana Landmarks Magazine because of the use of a historic building. The entire site's about .4 acres and will be developed with parking, fencing, landscaping. And then this is a shot of the zoning map. The area outline is in blue is what we're looking at in terms of the site planning area here tonight. Here's an aerial photo which depicts the old gas station out in front, repair shop out in front, as well as where the parking area will be in the back. We can always refer back to these if we need to. And then here, of course, is a bird's eye looking south of the property. Here's the site plan itself. As you can see, we'll get a little bit more detail here momentarily. The main parking area is in the back. There is some parking along the side of the building, mainly ADA parking. There's a proposal to have outdoor seating in a band area out in front with some additional parking on the side, motorcycles. So some of the typical review items that we take a look at on the site plan for the zoning orders would be access. Access to this project would occur via Broadway and Oak Streets. Alley access will remain closed to the property directly. They're showing a 20-foot wide asphalt driveway on Oak Street and then a 27-foot wide parking lot drive aisle. Setbacks, of course, for new buildings is something that we'll take a look at. Obviously, they're utilizing the existing building that's not being enlarged, so setbacks are really not applicable here. But 100% maximum lot coverage is allowed per the Broadway Main Design Standards, which are within the zone ordinance. In terms of the parking location, as I mentioned, the parking is in the rear of the site and that's in keeping with the Broadway Main Design Standards, which are in the ordinance itself. So you can see how the idea for the Broadway corridor was to have parking behind the buildings. So it's consistent with that. In terms of the amount of parking that's required, this is taken right out of the ordinance. There's a minimum number of spaces that's required and there's also a maximum. And so for every three seats in the restaurant, Mr. Fens would need to provide the appropriate amount of parking. So when you do the calculations on it, he's looking to provide 60 seats in the restaurant. So that means that you'd have to have a minimum of 10 spaces and a maximum of 30 spaces. And so he's providing 23, which includes two handicap spaces, which would have the proper dimension, striping and signage. So the amount of parking that's being proposed is within the ordinance. And the minimum space dimension that's provided is 10 by 20. In terms of screening, they're looking to provide a seven-foot tall fence along the alley to prohibit that access and to provide a buffer to residential property to the west. They'd also be providing a dumpster enclosure screen with a gate as required. And then in terms of landscaping and amenities, they'd be providing shrubs within planter boxes around the front of the building to create an outdoor seating and band area. And they'd also be providing a bicycle rack, which is required by ordinance. And then lastly, they would be providing shrubs along the fence in the parking lot entrance. Lighting is something that we take a look at. As is pretty typical at this point in process, a lot of times the lights are not, we don't have cut sheets of the actual lighting at this time, which is okay. But they are required to be fully shielded and pointed downward. And so that's something we'll certainly take a look at before the town issues any final certificate of occupancy. For drainage, because of the small size of the property, of course, a retention pond is not required. But there are parking lot drain tiles that will convey the storm water to the town's storm system on Oak Street. In terms of the community response, we did receive a letter of Vermont's trans from Terry Hiles, who owns property and resides on the second story of the TH Marvel Company that is off to the east. He had raised some concerns about noise, traffic, light pollution, drainage and property values. And we had passed him on that Vermont's trans letter to you all. And he prefers to see no curb cut onto Oak Street as proposed. Lastly, he is proposing a 10 p.m. restriction on outdoor bands as well. So with that, my recommendation would be to approve the site plan and to consider a stipulation regarding an end time for outdoor music if agreeable to the petitioner and Vermont strager. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address those. Thank you.
For the presentation, I have any questions, Adam?
I do have a quick question. So do we have any kind of noise ordinances for the town of Fort Mill as far as outdoor and live music is concerned?
That's a great question. We do. We have a noise ordinance. It's pretty basic and it's pretty vague, which has its pros and cons. But unlike other noise ordinances that I've seen, and by the way, the noise ordinance is housed within the town code. A lot of times they refer to decibels in terms of how much noise you can make with certain activities. We don't have anything like that. It basically says if you're making a lot of noises, if you're causing issues, that you're violation of noise ordinance. So it's pretty vague. But there is nothing that I could find that deals with any specific closing time or anything like that.
So we don't have any time outlined with the town as far as like if, you know, we do a lot of music festivals and whatnot throughout the year. So there's no timeframes like, hey, music has to be done by 11:00 or anything like that.
I think from what I've gathered, it's been informally done between the former police chief and some business owners to say, you know, if you could stop the outdoor concerts at 11:00, whatever it may be. But to the best of my knowledge and through my research, I didn't find anything that speaks to that one.
Typically, it's an ad hoc per event or per approval depending upon the adjacent seats. So neighborhood adjacent seats is a different approach. I know that from county perspective and specifically the ordinance we have with regard to noise and agituation has been incredibly difficult to enforce and just causes a lot of problems when you have a decibel reading, when you have a point of measurement, when it's required of the town to have to have a decibel reader, which is expensive and someone to administer it. There's just a lot of problems with getting to it with noise and complexity that needs to be considered if we're putting some like that place, especially for applying it to four locations.
Now, the one question that came up from the petitioner and it's a good question is, does the plan commission have the authority to make a condition like this in this set of time? My belief is that you do as part of your authority, but I'll actually defer to Alex on that point since I haven't had a chance to speak with him prior to that. Alex, are you there on the line?
I am, and I agree with you, Adam, that the plan commission does have the authority to impose conditions for approval.
So I think just to tee it up and approach it, I'll wind this. But if you were inclined to do a stipulation, I think there's probably four different things that you could do. One is you could say, no, we don't want to impose a stipulation because that really should be dealt with at a town level, not on a one-off basis. We don't want to set a precedent for this particular property. So instead, you know, we'd make a, we'd ask that even though the site plan ends here, you can still ask the town council to consider revisiting the noise ordinance in one capacity. So basically, you could pump the question and have the council decide that. The other one is you could do nothing, just leave it as is. And then I think really the other two choices would be, that's probably really a one choice number three is you could take a time. If they're, as you know, with these conditions, to the extent that it can be mutually agreeable between the petitioner and our Vermont straggers, that's ultimately what the town is always looking for rather than imposing something that you probably can't live with. But just to go over that, I think those are probably your three options as you chose to pursue them. And I do think that, you know, there is a strong case to be made that, you know, should this be done on a one-off basis or look at it more comprehensively so other business owners can weigh in at the council level? I think there's some legitimacy to that as well if you want to take that approach. So there's a few different options.
Sure. Just a couple of follow-up questions for me. When this is by draft and so that is as required, that means that the design standard requires it and it is put into the plan as required. It's not, we're going to, you know, as required if you tell them or not, right?
As required by zoning ordinance. Right. Anywhere it says as required, that's by zoning ordinance.
Okay. Tell us about the Oak Street curb cut. What's going on there?
Well, so as you know, that is a vacant lot that's between the property where it's his house and Denver's. And at the rezone time, we even touched on, is there a better way to do access to that back lot that might mitigate some of the concerns from the residents? The problem is that in my view, while I respect what Mr. Hiles proposed, I think it's going to make it even more challenging to navigate through the site. So what do you propose? I'll just, we'll see online, but.
So what he was thinking is, could we put a fence over here and then have one way out over here onto the alley? But as you can see, you know, we've got a couple of parking spaces, the dumpster area, it's going to take away for some parking over there. So while it's not a bad idea, I think it just doesn't, it's not advisable in this situation. But additionally,
I know some of the residents, especially Bob Sterrett, was concerned about more traffic on the alley. So we're just one point of consideration is that you're trading one problem for another one. So.
Well, we are not a one-way typical town. And so when you have a one-way superinverse or it's confusing, actually more dangerous. Another question, what's the DOT if we have access?
Well, nothing. So the current access.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but can Lacey repeat her question?
Yes. What DOT have to do with this?
Okay, thank you.
So Indiana has nothing to do with this at this time. The access that is being provided to Denver's, I believe it's pretty much free flow access off of Broadway, historic free flow access. As part of the road diet project, we are taking a look at access points to all sorts of businesses throughout the Broadway corridor in coordination with Indiana with their consultant. And once those plans, I don't want to say are solidified, but once they're, they've been more fully vetted by staff, and I believe we're going to go out to the business owners and show them what the plans are.
There's no contingencies within our decisions today, subject to DOT approval or not?
No.
Okay, good. What about the surface? What is the surface going to be of this parking area that we are reviewing?
Asphalt.
And last time we had a conditional approval of the zoning, we had a condition that the house would not be demoed. We still see it there. Has there been any requests for changes to that condition?
No.
And I think that is it for me. I've hauled all the questions. Members of the, what other questions might we have?
Want to circle back to the Broadway access. It's currently full paid, correct? There is access on the entire parcel. Is there anything in the mains for her that I guess the Broadway overlay district that says that that's not desirable? Especially when we're looking at a change of use and that's what I'm thinking about from, from the DOT perspective as we get into. So change of use, you're going to have outdoor seating. It's now unshielded. Drivers can drive right up into what is?
Those planters are like 800 pounds apiece.
Okay.
Yeah, true. You can't move them.
And let me defer to Joe because he had reviewed those Broadway plans for access.
Okay.
Do you remember what they're showing for Denver's?
There's no access. They always got access in Oak Street. Nothing in the front, so it'll all be covered.
Okay. So a minimum.
Which I guess.
They have a curb and a sidewalk.
That deals with it in like 23 or 24.
But not at the moment.
In the next two and a half years, do we potentially have any concerns for pedestrians and outdoor? I just with the ability for someone to, especially since there's parking on the front part, someone could pull up and drive right next to that.
Yeah.
And there's nothing.
It's a good point.
Mechanicular traffic.
And honestly, I consider that. That's why we're glad that you're on the board.
Just thinking about, you know.
I think to Fritz's point, that is because of the weight of those things is a barricade that could be reasonable. You know, I think that really the only other way that I can think of dealing with it is maybe mallards. The curb probably wouldn't work on because you have to redo the block. So.
So just to confirm, what we're talking about, the two handicap and the three parking spots that we see there on the left-hand side of the structure that we're talking on?
And the whole.
I'm in front, especially on Broadway, because your concern, if I understand correctly, is that you're going to have people that are sitting out there, but the speed limit on Broadway is still 40 and people are reaching.
So I could be driving westbound on Broadway and I could essentially use the paved frontage as my deceleration lane and then park in one of those spots. I'm not saying someone would do that, but you could.
Right.
If there's enough space that they could get off of 3667 Broadway into that, you know, especially if someone's behind them. I wonder moving the planters a little bit to where there's not a full driving, just the ability to.
So that people can't use it as a.
Drive around the front of the business on the parcel, right? Maybe it's.
Maybe when the petitioner speaks, we can always.
Sure. Something to think about.
To Nathan's point, when Broadway changes, there will be a curb there.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
No, we're sorry about any info. Something aesthetically pleasing that would keep someone. Maybe the easiest solution is just push those out far enough so that really there's only.
Really, they are pushed. We did push them. They're further towards the road now, even further than that.
And on the, on the west side of this, this end of those three, I know those seem to be out quite a ways because I've pulled up a couple of times.
We pushed them out.
So we do have some members who are participating via Zoom who will be voting on this. I think we do need to be closer to the microphone. So why don't we go with Adam? We'll call you back up from the petitioner. Do you like to come up and offer any commentary or clarification starts with the mic? Alex, do you want to?
I think it's, I think it's all been said already, what I'm just going to do there. It's just.
So just two clarification questions for me that I'll open up for everybody else.
I'm having a hard time hearing you really.
Okay, I'll talk later. So you are going, a question about pedestrian and the road, Broadway. You've moved those barriers out further so that cannot be a driveline.
They would be able to slide right there. The only thing I could do is put up concrete barriers out there around the place along the Broadway. If we want to do that, have those gigantic concrete barriers.
Now we're introducing a hole. That would look horrible. And it would look good and announce an obstruction when they clear it out. So I can say I personally drive by that site. It's not, it would not be conducive for someone to pull in anywhere on Broadway in front of that, where those planters sit right now. And I think unfortunately, the bird's eye photos that we have don't really give us justice and really show us how it's actually.
Because I think even on 116th Street, there's Greek's Pizza, there's a ice cream shop right there. I don't think they have any barriers or something on 116th Street.
Do they have seating up front?
Yeah, they let people stand out front as they get their ice cream.
Yeah.
I drive through there quite, quite frequently and I don't see people do what you're worried about. That's not something that I personally would be concerned about, people trying to drive on the pavement in front of there. If people were sitting out there eating, I.
So, okay. So one follow-up question that we have for you, Fritz, is as far as the 10 p.m. curfew, would you be agreeable to that for outside?
I'd agree to 11:00, not 10:00, just because then we're setting a precedent. So I've already talked to Jake Burgess. He's planning on having open windows downtown on his bar where he has a band in there until 11 o'clock also. That probably needs to be addressed by the town council if they want to put in some kind of noise ordinance at 11 o'clock.
Yeah. Well, okay, so something we can consider. Any other questions for Fritz?
What type of fence is going to go up? The seven-foot fence?
I painted off some. It's a corrugated fence. It makes it look more, gives it that garage feel. I could send you some photos of it.
It's not chain link, that's all I.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Fritz? Okay, we do have time in our agenda for this evening for any remonstrance. So there'll be people who would like to speak against this petition. I believe we have someone participating on Zoom. I can't see anyone. You're coming off of, was it Mr. Bryce?
Owens, would this be my duty? Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Bryce Owens. I'm an attorney up in Pendleton and I'm here on behalf of Terry Hiles. He and his wife live immediately east of this location. And in listening to the discussion, we submitted a written summary and I'm not going to take your time to read the whole thing to you. I just, I think what I should do is just hit a couple of highlights based on the discussion so far.
Mr. Bryce, we are having some audio interference. We're working, right?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Bryce. Do you mind chatting? Mr. Owens?
The is currently opposed to the curb cut.
Mr. Owens, we can't hear you.
Oak Street because those headlights facing direct. I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Owens, we cannot hear you. There's some audio interference.
Yes, can you hear me now?
No.
Can you hear me?
Not clearly.
It's broken. Hello? I'm not sure what to do.
Sometimes that works better.
I don't know what the audio.
Yeah.
Let me turn off, freeze up some bandwidth. Can you hear me now?
A little bit better. Try it.
Okay, so I turned off the video so that frees up some bandwidth. So maybe that helps. I'll try to make this very, very short. His principal objection has to do with the curb cut on Oak Street. We think there should be the screening fence to protect the residents from the headlights in that location. We think this can be accommodated and still have a sufficient amount of parking spaces. So you would pull in through the existing curb cut a little further up on Oak Street and you would cut through the spaces that are presently marked 17, 18, and 19 on the site plan. And you still have more than 23 spaces and those spaces could move over closer to the house anyway. And if you let people out the alley, then it's safer because you have a different way of getting in and out. We're worried about the safety of it and really about the curb cut being located where it's at. As far as time, as far as the suggestion of maybe 11 o'clock cutoff, he was really looking for 10. Perhaps we could do a 10 o'clock cutoff Sunday through Thursday and then maybe something later on Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Just to clarify, Mr. Owens, your recommendation for the curb cut would be to create one-way traffic?
It would not have to be one way, but we think it's important that there be a second way into this spot. Because there's, if you try to get a fire truck in there, you're not going to have any safe way to do it, of doing that. And if somebody was back there and there was a car burning, for example, in space number 19, they have no way out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Owens. Anyone else on the line or live who would like to have any testimony on Vermont's trans this evening? Okay, but the record show none. Fritz, you want any rebuttal?
Yeah. Going through the alleys too dangerous because I live there. There's people that drive and if you crisscross back in there, it would, somebody would get hit. There's just too many blind spots in that alley. Now I'm agreeable to 11:00 on Friday and Saturday night at 10:00 during the week. Okay.
Very good. Any other questions on the rebuttal? Okay, we do have time in our agenda for representatives of the government to have any testimony this evening. Come on up, Tanya.
If you want to get there, I'll go hobby. Tanya Davis, Old Town Council. Be careful in restrictions on times because I'm really concerned about that with the other business owners in town. So I think if you're going to look at a time restraint, we need to look at it at the council level. Let's make some, do some work on the ordinance. Be careful. I know that, for instance, let's just put it this way. I live two blocks from Jake's place and I can hear his music at night. But I live next to a train track, you know, and I've gotten used to that. I don't even hear it at night. So Mr. Howe has lived in that property for a long time and he's lived right down the highway for a long time. So he's fully aware of noise. I just think we need to be real careful about restraining live entertainment and stuff like that because I think it's going to, we're going to see more of that as time goes on. So you need to kind of, you can't put a restriction on one and not the other, is what I'm trying to say. So keep that in mind.
Anyone else from the government?
Lacey, Lacey, this is Alex in board. Hopefully you can hear me. Just to, just to follow up on Tanya's comments, I agree with that as well. And just to clarify, Adam asked whether the plan commission has the ability under the town zoning code to impose commitments for a site plan review. And the answer is yes. However, it seems to me the type of commitment that the commission is considering here about restricting hours or noise, those, those seem more in line with a commitment that would be imposed on the variance side of things, the actual use of the property rather than the components of the site plan itself. You know, the landscaping or the lighting, you know, if there was an issue with the lighting and the lights were going to be on until 1:00 in the morning or something, then, then you're, then you're tying the hours of operation and those lights to a component of the site plan. So while it is clear that under the town's code and Indiana law, the commission does have the ability to impose commitments and conditions related to the site plan. But I think we need to be careful, the commission should be careful that any such conditions are actually tied to components of the site plan and not the use itself, which is a different consideration.
Thanks, Alex. Any questions for Alex on that? Any follow-up questions for Adam? Any follow-up questions for Adam? Okay, we can either have some discussion as a council or we can open up discussion more formally with a motion if anybody gets so inclined.
I do have a question. When Mr. Owens was talking about the parking lot being one-way in, it shows on the site plan that that is twenty-four feet across, it looks like. Isn't that more than enough room for two cars to drive past each other so you could have two-way traffic? It, in, at that point, a car coming in and a car exiting at the same time?
For me, our traffic experts are nodding yes in here.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
It looks like we do have that opening. Okay, so anybody would like to either have a discussion or try for a motion?
I would make a motion to approve with no time stipulation. However, urge the town council to revisit our town.
Okay, so there's been a motion to approve with a note to the town council to reconsider both curfew and noise ordinances with adjacent residences or just reconsider it, but.
Awesome.
In a second. Okay, let's open us up for discussion. Any, I guess, any talking points that we didn't cover that you must bring up?
I think the only thing I would ask that the petitioner is try to consider what Nathan was talking about, if there's some way without, make it look silly to protect the people that are out front there. I don't know what that would be.
Right.
You know, just something to white turn in off Broadway. I don't think it's going to happen, but if there's some way to.
Right.
Esthetically put something.
Like I said, those things are very heavy. We had to move with a bomb cap.
I don't think it necessarily concrete ballards, but I would ask you to consider if there's something you can put up there. That's the only issue I have. And that's a small issue.
Lots of suggestions this evening. Any anyone else?
If those are as heavy as you say, I don't, I think we'd be fairly protected. It's just, people may not, you know, think people do that, but. The things people do.
I just, I'd love to make a suggestion that indot would hurry up and go ahead and start a project.
Should we make that part of our?
We are taking.
Did we make that part of the plan?
So we have a motion to approve the case with a recommendation to the town council to reconsider curfew and noise warnings. In a second, are we ready for a vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please indicate. And any abstaining? Okay, motion carries. Sure. Thank you for participating. Any board comment this evening? And a motion to adjourn. Anybody? Okay, all those in favor? We are adjourned at seven six. Thank you for your efficient time this evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Hey, thank you.
Good night.